Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the October 11th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting, and ask if you have pagers or cellphones, if you would, any other electronic device, if you would silence those now, please. If you are not the applicant, and you've come to talk to us about a case today, there are sign-up sheets like this, they're on the table outside the council chambers, and if you would complete it and give it to our staff, we would be happy to hear from you. First order of business is approval of the September 27th minutes. No approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. Okay, the minutes are approved, thank you. Next, Russell, are there continuance requests?
We have five uncontested requests for continuance, item seventeen through twenty-one. Item seventeen is C-6389, item eighteen, C-6390, item nineteen, C-6394, ought to be continued until October the 25th. Item twenty is S.P.U.D. 681, defer until November the 8th, and item twenty-one, P.C. 10276, to continue indefinitely.
Is there anyone here today who came to talk to us about these items? Just read seventeen through twenty-one on our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes, and they are approved. Mike, you want to vote?
Vote.
There we go, thank you.
There are two new requests for continuance, item five, P.U.D. 1469, request to continue until November the 8th, and item ten, C-6313, request to continue until October the 25th.
Now, I know a couple of you have signed up on item five, but you understand it's to be continued to the 8th of November?
Yes.
Okay.
And five?
Pardon me?
For there to be further discussion between the community and OHS.
You're welcome.
I'll move the continuances as read.
Okay, we have a motion to continue items five and ten on our agenda. Cast your votes, and those are approved. I have a continuance request from the public today. Hearing none, we'll go to the consent docket.
There are four items on the consent docket today, item one is C.E. 833, item two, C. 5981, item three, C. 5906, and item four, C. 5964.
Again, same question, is there anyone who came to talk to us today about items one through four on our agenda? Move the consent docket. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
Items requiring separate vote, item five, as we just discussed, has been continued until November the 8th. Item six is A.B.C. 765, it's an application by Luis Vargas for an A.B.C. 2 at 1,000 Northeast 63rd Street in Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? Need to come to the microphone? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm translating for him, it's Luis Vargas, and the address is 1,000 Northeast 63rd Street.
And you're, I guess, reusing a former Sonic site, is that correct? Sonic restaurant site?
A restaurant, yeah.
And this will be food service with alcohol, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. No one has signed up, commissioners?
No approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is C. 5942, this is an extension of the preliminary plat of the book in Ward This is also companion with item eight, which is C. 5976, it's an extension of the final plat of the book, section one.
Barry Lodge, Red Rock Engineering, representing the applicant. Have this before you, to have the plat, preliminary plat and final plat for the book extended. Staff recommendations, TEs that are contained in the staff report, we have no objections to.
Okay, there's a variance to TE one, commissioners, no one has signed up?
Move variance TE one.
A motion and second to approve the variance. Cast your votes, that's approved.
Move the application.
We have a motion and second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Item eight is a companion to the number seven, and there's also a variance TE one.
Move variance.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the variance. Cast your votes, that's approved.
Move the application.
And a motion to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and that's approved as well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item nine is C. 6356, this is a preliminary plat of the preserve at Parkside in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Ford Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Isaac Christian and Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting. What we have here is a plat for approximately 76 acres, it's right at 99 lots, and you'll, this will look familiar, as we were here two weeks ago for a rezoning case for the corner of the tract in the southwest corner of this tract. It was Zone C1 per P.U.D. 863, we rezoned that to R1, and this item was on the same docket, but required a continuance to have our traffic study be evaluated. The traffic study was submitted, and staff was able to review it and found no adverse impact to this. There are a handful of TEs, and there's a few I'd like to address, but a few that we are in agreement with would be TE one, TE two, TE seven, and then nine through 17. The others I'd like to address. TE three and four are essentially companion items. We are requesting a variance to allow private aerobic septic on-site instead of public sewer. Due to topography issues, we cannot connect to the sewer, and Chris Anderson, the civil engineer, is here to address any of those issues. We are providing a minimum of half-acre lots, so the DEQ is fine with what we're proposing. TE number five is, we will need a variance, we have three lots, and those are the three lots you see right here, northwest portion of this tract, and those three lots we're asking to take individual access onto Meridian. They are zoned residential, and because of the common area pond that is there, and the way that this site sits, the only way to develop these as residential is to take access from each lot onto Meridian. And this is not dissimilar to other, or other homes in this area that have individual access. Just north on 119th Street, you'll see a similar situation on the screen now, where you have homes that are taking access right onto 119th. So because of the unique features that this site presents, we're able to use that pond and common area, which is a good thing, but because of that, we're having to find solutions to develop the remainder as residential, and the only solution we can, we can use is individual access onto Meridian. The next issue is TE number six, and this deals with a portion of this street within the neighborhood being built to collector standards, and that stems from, the original P.U.D., P.U.D. 863, had a comment that tracks one, three, and four within the original P.U.D., had to have a collector street connecting all three. And as part of that P.U.D., they had the site plan that you see before you, and there was a collector street shown that went through what is now our R1 track, that connected from Meridian over to this, what was Track One of the original P.U.D. Now, this provided a note that says, "Location of the access route to the septic change at the time of development." So, the only thing that was hard and fast within the original P.U.D. is that tracks one, three, and four be connected. So the solution that we've come up with is highlight a newer yellow. What we're going to do is build this coming from 134th up through Straka Farm Road to connect to our flathead, to go straight east. So, the collector road will connect tracks one, three, and four, thereby satisfying the requirement of the original P.U.D. The next TE is number eight, and that deals with the length of our divided median coming into this. The sub-racks allow for a 300-foot divided median into median, to the other end of the median, we're at 329 feet, so we would need a variance to that as well. With that, when we, when we set to plat this, there were some, some unique features, and part of that is that big park to the north. We wanted to utilize that park to the north, because it's a great asset for this city, and it just so happened that we have that pond on-site that'll allow us to use that as common area that then connects to that park. The original P.U.D. has some specific language that dealt with the northern part of this track, and that requires us to have a 20-foot greenbelt on all the lots that above the park. So in the plat, you'll have essentially a 20-foot reservation on the northern boundary of all those lots that above the park, and it requires some specific tree planting elements that we will, we will meet, what the P.U.D. asked for. There is a lot of residential in this area, immediately to the west, you have three dwelling units an acre, and five dwelling units an acre, our average comes out to right at 1.3 dwelling units an acre. So with that, we would ask for your approval, and staff has recommended approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
I got a question, I guess, for your engineer. Chris, why won't lift stations work in this particular case?
A lift station might work. I met with Mr. Maddenwall of the Public Works Department, and basically, the city really
and, and there's only one way for us to be able to develop that portion as residential,
doesn't want any more lift stations, so that was the issue.
and, and the developer certainly doesn't want to just shed the land and not be able
I guess that's a good reason. I guess that's all the questions.
to use it. So the only solution we could find was the individual access onto that arterial, which is similar to what other, other homes have done in the area.
I have one, I'd like to ask the staff to address the access to arterial streets,
How big are these lots that are along Meridian?
Half acre.
because we have a subdivision policy, and I'd like to hear about that.
That might be a difference between the others that are, that are on arterials
Now, the subdivision regulations prohibit access to individual residential lots on
and these, those are probably a little bigger, a little more acreage.
Which are these, or others that have access?
an arterial street, so obviously, that would need a variance if you did want to allow
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's been our approach, we have tried to adopt this approach for a long
that, we'd prefer not. Arterial is designed to carry large loads of traffic at high rates of speed, which
time now, is to limit that access to, onto arterials.
just introduces more turning movements on, on the arterial street.
We have plenty of arterials where we've got a lot of problems that have derived from
Is Meridian's not scheduled for widening at the present time, I gather, from what
those, multiple residential access onto the arterial, so we're trying to prevent that from occurring when this area is developed.
I've been told?
That's correct, it's not.
Although it likely would be at some point?
Might not be a problem right now, but quite likely will be in the future.
I mean, with the development that's occurring down that part of?
As more development occurs down there, yes, it would be more likely that it would
Russ, the, the examples that he showed where the residential's accessed in Meridian,
be widened in the future.
Mr. Wiener, can you add anything to that, or not? Okay, thank you.
was that prior to?
I'm not sure, and I don't know where those are specifically.
That was 119th.
Yes.
119th.
119th, and it's just east of Meridian, so it's, it's less than a mile north of us.
I mean, I'm not that familiar with the area, but my personal belief is 119th will not carry as much traffic in that area as Meridian will.
Meridian will north and south?
At all. I don't, I don't think that will ever happen. And frankly, I'm with, I was concerned about those three lots running onto Meridian also. You got, you're not, it's going to be three drives in close proximity, right there on that major arterial, which will be a major arterial, I think it's just a matter of time on that one, so.
Well, I think one of the things is those, those lots, those residences on 119th are significantly older. I mean, this is, this is one of these places in South Oklahoma City that I go every single day, either to soccer practice or to South Lake Soccer Park, which is right next door. So I'm on this, every single day. Meridian is a racetrack, there is a stop sign at Meridian at 119th, there is not one south at 134th going on Meridian, going north and south, there is on the cross street, which is 134th. But my biggest concern about this thing is three lots. I mean, this is not in my ward, but this is my biggest concern, is three lots that front onto Meridian Avenue. My only other concern is that we have a park that I see no access to, and David, we've talked about this, no access to from this development.
The only access, I mean, I asked David about that, the only access is through the common area where the pond is on this site. It is open north into the park.
And, and I, and I agree with that 100%, with the exception of, that opens up into the soccer fields, not into the park. Again, I mean, that's, we're talking here just something that I know only because I'm there every day, and so that's my concern. Where this common area is, it's, that's CAA, that, from what I can tell, based on the aerial view, and knowing South Lake's, that's going to be right there where the actual soccer complex is, which is gated, I mean, which has got a chain-link fence, that you might be able to traverse that at some point, I, I just, that, that's not the park, the park is farther to the east, and so I just, that's nothing that you, I mean, that's something that you did or didn't do, that's just not a, that's probably not where I would recommend that access be.
So your, your preference, based on what you're saying, then, would be an access more toward, down toward Parkside Drive, down toward the east side?
Well, or, or preservation way, I'm not saying it's straight through the street.
Right, right, right.
But this common area is all the way to the far west, yeah. This is a, and there are ponds there, and I don't think this, I mean, this does it justice, the aerial view, but those soccer fields up against Meridian, they're, that's fenced off, six-foot-tall fence, you know, chain-link fence all the way around it, where the park is not, the park is open.
Got it, okay.
So.
Good point.
Those, those two items, that's the only thing I, the rest of this is great. I'm actually looking forward to this at some point happening. Those two things concern me, the houses on Meridian primarily. I can address both issues. Talked to my client, and he's willing to provide a pedestrian access further to the east in this development going up north, so whether it's split in a lot or somewhere, we will provide a, a second means of access to the park further east away from, from that common area. On the issue of the three lots, one of the options that, that we've, we've talked about, if, if the individual access doesn't work, and that's our preference, the only other thing we could, could think to do to use that land would be some sort of light commercial that complemented the neighborhood, so my, my client's willing to delete those three lots, and what you'll probably see is us coming back with some sort of spud with, with some light commercial to compliment the neighborhood.
He puts in a soccer store, he will never work again. Or 7-Eleven.
Okay, commissioners, no one has signed up?
So we need, we need a variance.
Well, we need a variance on TE three because of the sanitary sewer issue.
Okay, so I'll move to approve the variance to TE three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE three, cast your votes, and that's approved, Nick? There you go, okay.
And, and we're going to move to approve this, but we're going to remove the three lots along Meridian, right?
Well, at this point, we just don't need to approve the variance to TE three, just let it, just go by that.
Okay.
Then I believe we need a variance to TE?
Oh, five, I'm sorry, yeah.
Four.
Yeah, and four.
Right.
So. Four is just a TE, it doesn't need a vote.
Oh, okay, all right.
So do we see to delete that TE?
Five, five does, we pass on five, take no action there. Well, we don't have to delete it, we just don't vote. Then we go to number eight, and it's a 29-foot overage to the 300 feet.
Anybody have a concern with that? Okay, then I'll approve, move to approve the variance on TE eight.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance on TE eight, cast your votes. Now we need a motion on the item.
Do we need to delete TE number six?
Pardon me?
Do we need to delete TE number six, the collector street issue?
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, it's going to provide the connections, but not as a collector.
Correct, just not from here to here, it will be from 134th, and still connect all three lots.
So what we'll do is have a motion for item nine deleting TE six.
Okay, so moved.
Got a motion and second to approve item nine deleting TE six, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item ten has been continued until October the 25th. Item eleven is C. 6385, this is a preliminary plat of CBK Industrial Park in Ward one. Item eleven? Warren? Item eleven?
Sorry, I'm just going to do this quick. Warren Peacock, WPM Design Group, representing the applicant. This is a industrial development of 14 industrial lots, and we do agree with the TEs in the staff report, so we would request approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Well, this is an appearance corridor, so what are your plans for screening and planting?
Excuse me. Well, as far as, are you talking about perimeter site-proof fencing, or what?
Well, you're on an appearance corridor, and we've got specific guidelines for appearance corridors in terms of, of.
Well, you'll have to forgive me, I was unaware of that, and it wasn't part of the staff report, I guess, so I'm not sure exactly what we're.
Well, I didn't see it in the staff report either, which is why I'm raising the question.
Yeah, I really don't know how to answer that question, I guess.
I think what we're looking for is.
Finally found something I didn't know.
Planning and landscaping, particularly, primarily, I would suggest along the Kilpatrick side, trees, increased landscaping, provide some screening back from the Kilpatrick turnpike on the, I guess it's the west, is that right?
Yes, that'd be the west, yes. And we can do that, those lots are fairly deep, so there's plenty of room back there to provide a landscaping corridor.
Right.
That's what we need to do.
Well, you'll need to get with staff and find out exactly what the appearance corridor standards are, Jake?
Are there standards that we use on a rezoning application, and this is a plat, so he would just meet whatever the landscaping requirements are for that location?
In the plat, or because of the?
When he develops, with the building permit, he'll meet all the rezoning, subdivision landscaping requirements. He gets a building permit.
So it'll be taken care of at that point?
He will meet the landscaping ordinance requirements, nothing.
That's what, we didn't rezonate, it's been rezoned years ago, so that's why I was a little worried about it.
If we were looking at a rezoning application, there would be appearance corridor standards applied if it were a P.U.D.
So, all right, let me back up again, are you telling me that we're not applying them because this isn't a rezoning?
You can't apply anything extra to a plat other than what the basic zoning ordinance requirements are.
Or what's called for in the P.U.D., in a P.U.D. or an S.P.U.
Okay.
That answers the question, why the staff didn't say anything, I guess, didn't it?
Okay, didn't answer very well, but answered, I guess.
Maybe I just got lucky.
I got my, I got my answer.
I guess I just got lucky.
Based on that, I will.
And we didn't approve.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, you didn't have your, you didn't have your speaker on.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 11, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Item 12 is P.C. 10322, an application by Campbell Industrial Park and Wildwood Preserve to rezonate for northeast 70th Street from I-1 Single Family to I-1 Light Industrial in Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dennis Box, this is an item that was continued at your last docket, and if you'll look at the aerial, this is the property in question. It has a creek that runs through it, I met with your staff, and the picture that is on the screen clearly depicts that there's a floodway, and that will remain, and so what we did was, we took three acres out of our zoning request, so what was 23.88 is now 20.35 acres, and all that will be to the north of the heavily wooded area. We're asking for I-1, if you look at the, at your staff reports, you'll note that there is I-1 to the north, there's I-2 to the west, and then there's C-3 down adjacent to where the neighborhood is. With regard to the neighborhood, my client intends on working with them and coming up with another development which will complement the neighborhood on the south portion, he owns that with other partners, and that will be coming in at a later time. It'll, it will not be industrial, but it will be potentially office, and it will be done under a putt or a spud. So, we think I-1 is appropriate, surrounding zoning reflects that, you have I-1, you have I-2, and the uses are listed on here, and we're here to answer any questions.
Commissioners, no one signed up?
I think I agree with the staff, it should be a P.U.D., and I'd like to know what you're going to do, where it's going to be, what's the screening is going to be to the south, et cetera, and it just seems to me that that's what, when you go to rezoning from R1 to I-1, I'd like to know what you're going to do. And so I really can't support this application, it doesn't mean that I don't support what you're going to do, but I think that we need to know what it is, where things are going to be, access, landscaping, you know, what, just what's going to happen, because you do have residential areas to the south, and if you're going to develop the southern portion, you know, then all the more reason, if you're going to do that office or commercial, whatever it is, all the more reason, these two, the one that we have in front of us and the one you're going to bring, I think are totally appropriate to be a P.U.D.
Well, a, a single P.U.D. would not be appropriate, because they're going to be totally different kinds of uses, but to answer your questions, number one, if you'll look at this, at this map, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go out there, but it is heavily wooded, as indicated, what we did was, we tried to determine exactly where the floodway was, and did that, and that's why we moved our line to the north and took three acres out of our application. Nothing can be done in the floodway, so with regard to landscaping and regard to buffer, you're going to have those three acres that are going to remain just as they are. This area will come in with a P.U.D., and at that point, since it is next to a neighborhood, I think it is totally appropriate to have a putt or a spud. Now, the closest point of our proposed zoning is in excess of 300 feet. This point is in excess of 800. And so I really can't support this application. It doesn't mean that I don't support what you're going to do, but I think that we need to know what it is, where things are going to be accessed, landscaping, you know, just what's going to happen, because you do have residential areas to the south, and if you're going to develop the southern portion, you know, then all the more reason, if you're going to do that office or commercial, whatever it is, all the more reason these two, the one that we have in front of us and the one you're going to bring, I think are totally appropriate to be a PUD.
Well, a single PUD would not be appropriate because they're going to be totally different kinds of uses. But to answer your questions, number one, if you'll look at this, at this map, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go out there.
Yep.
But it is heavily wooded.
Yep.
As indicated, what we did was, we tried to determine exactly where the floodway was, and did that, and that's why we moved our line to the north and took three acres out of our application. Nothing can be done in the floodway. So with regard to landscaping and regard to buffer, you're going to have those three acres that are going to remain just as they are. This area will come in with a PUD, and at that point, since it is next to a neighborhood, I think it is totally appropriate to have a PUD or a SPUD. Now, the closest point of our proposed zoning is in excess of 300 feet. This point is in excess of 800 feet. So that's probably why you don't see any protests, why you don't have any neighbors down here. And the other side of it is, if you look at your zoning map, you have industrial uses that surround this property. So we think I-1, which allows no outside storage and was put into play to be a use that would be appropriate in these kinds of areas, is appropriate.
So Dennis, for clarity, so are you deleting the portion of the site along the creek north of the tree covered? Is that what you're doing?
Yes, sir. What we did was, we took our site, which was 23.88 acres, moved it up, and now it's 20.35.
Okay.
So basically, what you're saying is, on the staff recommendation, you're doing the second part of the recommendation rather than submitting a PUD?
Yes, and that was in coordination with staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was aligned with General Lee Bob's thought on that when I first read through this, but as I get a better feel for the land and the spacing between these two, along with the fact that you're going to have that landscape berm there that's already there, the existing floodway, I think it makes, I think it makes a little bit more sense to me, at least.
And in that regard, if you look across the street to the north, old frontage is lined up with straight I-1.
Why is there an indication that that is R-1, and then just to the west of that, it says agricultural?
I don't know if that's the R-1, but I can tell you that.
I mean, I-1, I'm sorry. I-1.
Oh, here?
Yes.
That is I-1.
Okay, but is that whole lot, I-1, all the way to Santa Fe? Because it indicates agriculture.
Entire strip is zoned light industrial, but that end of the property is being used for agriculture purposes.
Oh, okay.
You've got the zoning and the land use both on that.
Okay.
And then all the use of the lineup down here are industrial.
We're surrounded by industrial. And then you have very nice residential that's south of this heavily wooded area, and that's why I think the PUD would be totally appropriate for there, and that's ultimately what the client will come in with.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Again, no one has signed up.
I move that we approve the application with the modifications that was read, as far as reducing acreage and moving from the floor plan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 13 is SPUD 685. It's an application by Austin Rogers with Dollar General stores to rezone 9,000 South Harrah from I-8 Single Family to SPUD 685 in Ward 4.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. What our application for today is SPUD 8, or excuse me, 685, to permit the development of a Dollar General store at the southeast corner of Southeast 89th and Harrah Road. What we've come in with is a single-use SPUD, in which we were specific on the building size, we were specific on what the building will be, and specific on height. When you look at the area, this is obviously a rural, rural area, and we feel like some bit of retail is appropriate. And part of the reason it's appropriate, in our opinion, is all the people out there are going to need to shop, and we just assume that the sales tax go to Oklahoma City, because if there aren't retail services out there, these folks are going to leave and go somewhere else. So because we provided for only one use within the SPUD, and we've been specific on all the elements on the site, we think it's appropriate, and we would ask for your approval.
We've got a note on our agenda that there's 138 signatures on a petition. Do we know where that's at?
Wasn't that what we had last time, Jim? We, we saw it last time, I think, the petition.
This is a different application.
Different side.
Different side.
We discussed this pending application the last time. We talked about Dollar General and suggested that maybe they read the city's master plan and the sector plans, because we're not looking for more.
Give it to David.
Commercial off these nodes. There's commercial right across the street if you want to make a buy and pick up some land, because it's already zoned. But we're, our policy is not to add to commercial corners that are not in the areas where the sector plans are asking for them.
And the site across the street to the west is already developed. It's a Shamrock Gas Station. There is some C-3 to the south, and I can tell you in my discussions with, with our client, they attempted to buy those tracks, and they weren't able to buy them. They weren't for sale. So if there isn't C-3 that's available to purchase, what they could, all they can do is find a track that is available to purchase, and if C-3 is already there and appropriate, we would submit that C-3 on the hard corner would be appropriate, especially when you consider that we've taken out every single use other than retail sales.
We do, no. Go ahead. There's a couple of other things I think we need. I've got a copy of the, of the master plan, and it was developed February 22 of 2007. So we're getting almost six years old on the plan, and, you know, if we stick strictly these plans, why do we need a planning commission? Well, this.
A little more involved in that. Go ahead, Nick.
Taking that a little different direction. This application is so narrow. It's a single-use PUD. I know it's a commercial use, and I know there's other commercial property in the area, but how much tighter could this possibly be? And realistically, it is a, well, commercial corner. It's the intersection of two main section line roads. If it was straight C-3, I'd probably have a problem with it, but with the single use, I think that mitigates a lot of that.
Again, I said the last application, I've seen Dollar General, I've kind of watched their model in operation in a rural setting, where I have a home, a residence, and that I go to the Dollar General. They're small stores, they're unobtrusive, commercial uses, they keep retail hours, and they probably agree to the hours of operation for this thing. You know, they build a nice building. It's not like putting in a Target, or even, it's, there's less traffic than a convenience store at this, for these, these operations. And it is quite small. They're, they're almost invisible in their operation, quiet, you know? I don't know. I'm inclined, in my view though, is, I mean, I know Mr. Box said that, but where do these people go? I mean, yeah, where are they, where are they going to shop?
Well, there's, there's several developments. Well, I know there's one just to the east of there, and I'm not really sure, it's been a while since I've been out there, but there are several houses in it. To the south, there are several developments that is really building up on Harrah Road right now. And, you know, where does Dollar General go? They go in rural-type settings. I mean, that's part of their deal. And I have no problem with this one. I just, and I, I would like to see, you know, the protests and kind of see what, you know, what that part of it is, but I really have no problem with this.
We do have someone signed up. Mr. Rothrock, if you'd come forward to the podium and give us your name and address and tell us your concerns.
My name is Jim Rothrock. I live at 4700 Shelley Scott Drive in the Oklahoma City area. I am the landowner of the land just in question. First of all, the protest letter that you addressed, sir, I believe what, I think there's a mistake here in that, that was for, before the planning commission during the last session for the Dollar General that was submitted to you for the Anderson Road and 149th. And I've, I've checked with my neighbors, and I've looked into the situation. Being a landowner, I'm, I'm very conscious of what's going on here. I was approached some time back about this. I've owned this property for 20 years. I grew up in the area, back when it was a dirt road, and I struggled with trying to make this decision before it came to your, to your vote, to see what, what the best is for myself and also for the community. That corner is unique in its characteristics, and it's briefly what I'm going to address with you right now. It's that main artery off of Harrah Noah Road and I-40, exit 172. The traffic is very busy. A little store across the street is, in my opinion, an eyesore. They sell beer, cigarettes, and snacks. That's it. With the addition of Dollar General in the area, I think it would do more to support the community, the neighborhoods, the houses, housing additions that was addressed. There's a 320-acre housing addition half a mile up the road. There's an 80-acre housing addition just to the east of it, has like nine houses in it now, and it's slowly developing. I've been approached many times over the year to sell my land to housing developers, and I, I don't want to do that. I'd like to keep this legacy for my children. But that corner serves no purpose other than a commercial application due to its locations. Two acres, it sits up on a hill, it's directly on the corner. As far as that C-3 track that's just to the south of that corner, it's in a floodplain. It's a, there's, I can't ever imagine anybody ever getting to build anything on that C-3 due to its location in that creek that runs behind it. I own that creek that, as it crosses Harrah Noah Road, I see what it does, and it does get, get up during heavy rains. But the, where the corner is that Dollar General proposes, it's in a great location for it. They've proposed to make the entrance off 89th Street, which is excellent planning, in my opinion. Talked to the neighbors, nobody has any opposition to it. I feel that it's just a matter of time before I'm going to have to do something with this corner, because I can't run my cattle on it. There's nothing that, it serves no purpose. Nobody would really ever want to live there residentially. You couldn't have animals, the noise, et cetera. It's a dangerous corner for anything other than a commercial property. So I came here today just to introduce myself and cast my support towards this project. As far as the fire department goes, there's a, there's a station at 104th and Peabody Road. That's about four miles, four and a quarter miles from there, so there's adequate fire protection. The Oklahoma County Sheriff's Department, they sit in my driveway often to catch people coming down 89th Street, so we have pretty good fire and police protection for the county sheriff and so forth. And when I call the Oklahoma City Police Department for whatever the situation may be, they're, they're usually quick to respond as well. So I think it's a good fit for the community. As far as where do people go shopping, they go to Harrah. That's, that's the closest place. If, that's head north. South, they go to that little store on 149th, or excuse me, it's past 140 on Pecan Valley, kind of in the Norman area. So that's it. It's like a desert out there, other than the Loves on McLeod Road and I-40. That's pretty much it. That's our only choices out there. They know they're not going to sell beer, they're not going to sell gasoline. I think it's, I think it's an excellent fit, and that's why I agreed to look into this with, with the real estate company.
Thank you.
I've got another question for the staff. Is there not a petition against this application?
We'll get it out of the file. Look at it.
There is a petition? Okay.
Just probably get out, just wanted to make a comment on the, on the purpose of the plan. That plan is probably a 20-year timeframe on the plan. Not a lot has changed in that area, so really, any of the policies that speak to development in the southeast sector, I don't, I don't think that there's been substantial change to warrant discounting the document. The document was compiled through deliberate and, and a fairly lengthy process of consultation with people who lived in the area as a result of that. The policies that were developed indicated that some rural commercial development was suitable, but to ensure that that occurred in an orderly development process, particular nodes were selected as best able to serve those purposes, and this was not one of those, because it is quite separate from some of the residential development that has occurred in the area. So that's why we don't think it's appropriate at this location. We are trying to ensure the orderly development of the, of the rural area and to maintain those rural values that were espoused to us when we heard the last application for a Dollar General. These people say they don't, they don't want that, they want to go to other places. Now, it's a different set of people in this particular circumstance, I understand, but the sentiments were what we heard during the development of the southeast sector plan.
I'm really confused. The petition that you have, does it relate to this particular application in this place? With a hundred and some signatures?
I have not seen a petition, but.
I'm asking, Jim.
I don't see it on this. Yes, there it is. It is on this particular location.
And there's how many signatures?
It says there's 25 signatures, and then there's another note that says there's 138 total. I don't understand that. Can you explain that?
138 are of total signatures. 25 was just the one on that one-page count.
Where did the 138 signatures come from in this area? I mean, there are not 138 cows that live out there, let alone people. What are the addresses, Jim?
There's one within 300 feet that sign.
One?
One. The others are outside 300 feet.
Well, but the other 137. I mean, this is not a developed area. I'm, I'm shocked that there could be 138 protests from this area. I'd like to see that thing.
Well, I tend to, I mean, either it has a forgery or, I don't know. However, we heard, we heard in person, maybe not on this spot, but the same people, about how much they wanted this to be rural. We don't want the commercial, we don't need it, and I think I agree with Russell. The plan says rural, leave it rural. There are C-3s all over the place. Some can be developed, some can't. There's a, you don't put a store, a 20-foot-tall sign with lights on it out there in goat pasture, and I just think that that's not appropriate. I agree with, with Russell, and, and also, whomever these people are, 138 total signatures, they want it res, they want this rural, and that's, that's my position on this, and I don't see, I agree with, with Commissioner Gales, this is a one-use thing, but you've got a 20-foot lighted sign and parking and et cetera, and then you'll have increased traffic, and these people just probably really would like to go shop at Harrah, or would like to go, you know, I think, I think it's our job to let commercial influences in absolute total rural areas just because Dollar General wants it. That's kind of what I think is my position on this, and so I really can't support it.
A couple of things. I think as Mr. Hensley, Hensley said, these things fit in in rural areas. I think his comment was, they almost blend in to where you don't know that they're there. And the issue with the protest letter, I think it speaks more volume that there's no one here to protest. I think there's a lot of names on there with not a lot of addresses, so maybe someone just put it up at a store and got a bunch of people to sign it, but the fact that there's no one here to voice protest makes me question the signature a little bit.
Apparently, these signatures are all from the. Apparently, these signatures are all from the south of this property. The, it indicates that they are residents of Cleveland County, and isn't 89th Street County Line there?
Mm-hmm.
So at least we can identify them as being to the south, but you're correct, there are no addresses on here to identify where they're from.
What's the requirement for notification for this hearing, for this application? Is it 300-foot radius?
Have to be up to 15 people. You have to go beyond 300 feet.
So how many people do you think live 300 feet from this spot?
Very many.
Zero.
The point is, they didn't know about it.
You've got five within 300 feet, and one of those is the state of Oklahoma.
You know, I still, you know, going back to Anderson Road and 149th, I built several houses in the subdivision just south of 149th and Anderson, and that's been probably 25, maybe 30 years ago. And when we started that subdivision, people in that area did not want that subdivision. In fact, we had to have 24-hour guard out there to keep vandalism down from people that didn't want that subdivision. Those very people that live in that subdivision are protesting the Dollar General store at 149th and Anderson. You know, Daniel Boone moved a long way south or west when he saw this church steeple go up. I mean, just like the gentleman said, this is a commercial corner. Yeah, it is rural, but one of these days, it's not going to, the southeast sector plan is a guide, in my opinion. And I spent many hours helping to develop this southeast sector plan. But if we go strictly by it, then anything that falls in these sector plans that doesn't fit, we don't even apply brain to the Planning Commission. I don't understand, and with that, with one other exception, I don't like the 20-foot sign, but I think we need to drop that down to at least 10-foot monument sign. And with that, I'm going to recommend approval.
And on the TEs, we're agreeable to whatever you'd like, the 10-foot sign, as well as the TE number one with the Cypress screen, whatever you'd like.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 13 as conditioned. Cast your votes. Okay, who didn't vote? Four, four. It's continued.
Can we ask that we just send it on to council with neutral recommendation?
Move to council without recommendation.
Cast your votes again. Who changed? What, what is it? It's automatically continued.
Thank you.
But before we get to another, oh, no, no, wait till that to the end.
Item 14 is PUD 1473. It's an application by NIBAC to Reevesown 3201 North Richmond Road from PUD 638 to PUD 1473 in Ward 3.
Is the applicant here? Come to the microphone, please.
Excuse me, I'm not familiar with this.
Give us your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Gerald, J-E-R-A-L-D, Ashby, A-S-H-B, like in boy, Y. The address is 3201 North Richland Road.
Thank you. Tell us what you plan to do here.
We have, excuse me, we have had a number of inquiries about purchasing the property, but typically the inquiries having to do with I-light industrial or moderate industrial. And the current PUD would not allow that type of property, of businesses to be there. And I have worked with the staff to see if it would not work with that type of zoning with others in the area having similar zoning or PUDs. My family has owned the property for about 12 years and had other businesses there that complied with the PUD.
And so your plan is to allow, use I-2 and have outdoor storage, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, no one has signed up. Buck? And I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes. And you approve, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Item 15 is C-6393. It's a final plot of Windchase Edition, Section 2 in Ward 8.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. And this is obviously Section 2, final plot of the Windchase Edition, and we are in agreement with all the TEs and would ask for your approval.
No one signed up, commissioners?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 16 is a public hearing and resolution approving the proposed capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2013-2017, and we have presentations from various city department heads and officials on this item. Michael Strup is here to introduce it.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Strup with the Management and Budget Office. I am over the capital program. I'm pleased to present to you the five-year capital improvement plan for 2013 through 2017. We update the capital improvement plan every two years. Currently, we are on schedule to update the plan. We did it about this time in 2011. Having a five-year capital improvement plan is not only a good practice, but is also required by state law.
Michael, can you pull the microphone down?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Hear you a little bit better. Thank you. Okay. State law requires that the plan receive approval from not only the Planning Commission, but also an adoption by city council. How do projects get identified and included in the five-year capital improvement plan? The citizen-approved geo bond projects are included and prioritized by each one of those overseeing departments. Department issues from strategic business plans are also used to include projects. Examples would be infrastructure needs, fleet replacement, and also capital maintenance. Then also, several of our departments consult and use special plans and studies to identify projects in the future. These include like fire station location studies, park studies, water and wastewater utility master plans, airport master plans, et cetera. Want to give you a, another look at the process and what we've completed so far. Back in November, December of 2011, the departments worked on updating their five-year capital improvement plans. And then in January and February, those plans were presented to the city's capital planning team. And then at the Planning Commission's request, when we did this back in 2011, we wanted to bring you, bring the commission into the process earlier. We presented the plans to Planning Commission at some workshops back in March and April this year. Then June and July, the plans were presented to the city manager's office for final review before being presented to city council in August of 2012. And then last month, the plan was introduced to the Planning Commission, and we distributed the five-year plan documents to you. Briefly, I just want to kind of go through the plan and show you some charts and be able to provide you totals by funding source here on this slide. City also has trusts that are involved in our capital improvement plan, and those make up 39.4% of the funding that's available for projects. That's primarily the Oklahoma City Water and Utilities Trust. They have $652 million included in this five-year capital improvement plan. Our special tax funds, they make up 31.8% of the funding, and that's primarily our MAPS III program. Over the next five years, it's going to fund those projects. Our geo bond funds, those make up a little over 15%, and of course, that's our, a lot of our major infrastructure improvements are included there. Looking at the capital improvement plan by function, public services make up the largest percent at 56.7%. Of course, this would be public works, airports, and our utilities. Culture and recreation makes up 27.3% of the plan. This would be parks, MAPS III projects, riverfront redevelopment, fairgrounds, zoo, and those type of projects. And then OC MAPS, even though that program is winding down, it does still make up 6.3% of the plan. Our last chart here is just looking at by project type. Facilities make up the largest percentage there at 38.5%, and this will be our MAPS III projects, airports, and also the remaining OC MAPS school projects. Utilities make up the next at 27.6%. And then our nonutility infrastructure projects, such as bridges, streets, drainage, et cetera, make up 14.2% of the plan. Now, I just want to take a look at our remaining calendar for our adoption this year. Today, we have presentations that are going to be given by police, public works, parks, and utilities department. We also have a resolution on for your approval today. And then we have targeted to take the plan to city council for adoption October 23rd. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions. Otherwise, I will pass it on to the police chief for his presentation.
Good afternoon. Chief Bill City, for the police department, give you our five-year capital improvement plan. Get it up here. Okay, we're going to start with our capital plan by fiscal year. You'll see our total for the five years is 86 million. You'll see the first three years, obviously, there's quite a sum that make up the majority of the total. Included in that are things like the Southwest Briefing Station, property room remodel. We've got cars and vehicles, which make up a big chunk of that. We're actually going to purchase two helicopters within, actually in this year's budget. Again, headquarters, 911 equipment, we've got a mobile command post, but the lion's share of those first three years has bond money in it that makes up the funding for our new headquarters building and Southwest Briefing Station. Summary of our projects, you see that our police and courts complex make up 50 million of that 86. We have equipment at 30 million. Again, equipment is made up of cars, trucks, vans, helicopters within that period also. So that's the majority of that funding. Projects by type, you can see where police courts and complex, 58%, equipment 36%. As I said before, it's buildings and cars. Projects by funding source, our geo bond and our use tax make up the lion's share of the funding for all of our projects over the next five years. You see where geo bonds is 46.5 as well as use tax. Again, a lot of our vehicles are purchased out of the use tax. We have been doing that for the past, really about, well, probably about seven or eight years now. We've committed use tax, city managers committed use tax to that, as well as the city council. Our headquarters, now, this is not what it's going to look like. Might be close with the two different colors of brick, but it's actually going to be a little bit different than that. But it will sit on that, sit on that site. It's going to, it'll, you know, consist of probably close to 89,000 square feet and a cost of about 25.6 million. ADG's doing the projects, and they, you know, they're reluctant to release the new design of the building at this point till they've got all the details worked out. But it's going to be a nice facility. We should start construction, we're hoping, the summer of next year, summer of '13. And that's going to be an 18- to 24-month project. Also included in our funding is courts. The courts project consists of about 24.9 million, and it will start approximately one year after we start the police headquarters. And it's going to, you know where police headquarters is now, we're going to have the, police new headquarters will be on the south side in that parking lot, and the courts will be on the north side of the current facility where the courts is now. So there's parking lots on both sides, and that's where your new facilities will be. The plan is, is to demolish the current facility, and then we'll create some parking, those types of, for police vehicles and courts in that, in that area. Southwest Briefing Station, we were hoping actually to get that started this summer in August. We've had, it went out for bids, bids, all the bids came in a little bit higher than anticipated, so they're looking at either reducing that project somewhat or sending it back out for additional bids. But that's, both of those things are under consideration at this point. This facility will be at 54th and South Portland. It'll actually sit on airport property. They're providing the property at some point. What we're hoping to do in the plan is to also move our helicopter unit to be contiguous to this facility that we have on the airport property. Right now, it's at the old downtown airport. At some point, that land's not going to be available to us. We own that property now, but at some point, we're not going to be able to be there. If there's residential things or businesses built around there, it's not going to accommodate us being able to fly helicopter in and out. So this was an ideal place for both the Southwest Briefing Station and a new helicopter facility at some point. But it won't be in the initial project. Our property unit, it's going to get about $1.6 million worth of improvements. That's going to include sprinkler systems, it's going to include new HVAC, it's going to get, it's going to get quite a bit of remodel. The front or the south side of it is actually going to be turned into office space so it would accommodate our sex offender registration unit. Currently, we're in the building at 616, which is just east of this building, and we want to move it to the south side of that building along Main Street to accommodate our registration. And again, the outside of the building, some windows, some other things will be upgraded so that it will, it will kind of flow into our new facility, because our new facility will actually be just west of, west of this facility, in the same block. New vehicles, if you haven't, this has actually been in the paper, but this is our new vehicle. We have about 24 of them right now. It's the new Taurus. They don't make the Crown Vic any longer. And this is the new police vehicle Ford makes. We have other options. Ford was the better option for our needs, price-wise and also for functionality. You can see where the 13, 2013 base price is 30,000. This does not include about $8,000 worth of electronics and information systems, equipment, computers, and all of that that'll go into the vehicle. There's another $8,000 you can add on to that. By 2017, we're projecting the cost to be, as you can see, 36. It's about a 5% a year increase that we're projecting over the next five years.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Will these, all these new cars have the bulletproof doors that we saw the other night? Is that...
Will have, they, it has one, it has one bulletproof door, which is the driver's side. We could add them in the other side. I mean, it's a pretty expensive proposition when you're talking about having, you know, 584 cars out on the street. five hundred, five hundred and eighty-four cars out on the, on the street. But we started adding, we actually started adding that to the Crown Vics when Katie Lawson was involved in the shooting where she was trying to use the door for protection and was shot up pretty badly. So this, this, this offers, offers that driver and the officer's additional level of protection we felt like was necessary based on, you know, what occurred with, with Katie. Gives them a place to hide if they, you know, a place to hide when they stop cars and things like that if they need to and get that added protection. So we feel like it's sufficient at this point and obviously the officers are pretty happy with that also. This vehicle does a lot, the officers love this vehicle. They've already driven it, handles better. Some of them, we ordered some of them with all-wheel drive. It's about a thousand dollars more per car to, to get all-wheel drive. Obviously, they handle a lot better on wet pavement and officers really like it. But again, we felt like if we ordered just a, a certain number of those vehicles, if the weather's really bad, they're pool cars, that we could use those vehicles in heavy snow and those types of things to make sure we can answer calls when, you know, rear-wheel drives are very, very difficult to get around in. They're front-wheel drive vehicles, so even in bad weather, they'll still handle better than the rear-wheel drives. And, and they handle better overall anyway than the Crown Vic in all conditions. And one thing, I mean, I was talking about different functionality. If you look at this vehicle versus a Chevy, this trunk is so much larger. And now the officers have so much, you have all this, you all have all the computer equipment. You may have tac team equipment, you may have personal protective equipment for hazardous materials, you may have a assault rifle. I mean, we've got so much equipment now the officers put in the trunks that, that has to be a consideration in all of our vehicles. So this, this would accommodate all of that. Projected police five-year fleet replacement plan, you can see where we have eighty-five in twelve thirteen. And then over the next four years, it's going to go up significantly. We try to trade our, our, our field vehicles, our black and, what we call black and whites are all black now, but, but our field vehicles every hundred thousand miles. So we make sure that that car, that car can stay in the field with fewer repairs. Once you get to about a hundred thousand miles, it's going to be down more, you can have more repairs. You have a bigger risk to the officers if there's something wrong with the vehicle, if they're involved in a pursuit. So we've kind of, we've kind of, you know, benchmarked at a hundred thousand miles where we trade those vehicles in. So basically, what you're seeing is that's how many cars we're going to have most likely close to a hundred thousand miles. Now, this also includes, this also will include plane cars, but some, we'll drive those, you know, longer than a hundred thousand miles if the car's still in great shape, they're not involved in pursuits, those types of things. So you don't have the risk that you have if you have with an officer in the field answering calls. So you can see by the end of five years, we're looking at six hundred and eighty-two vehicles. The reality is, is we won't end up ordering that many. Some of these cars will have less miles than that, and so we don't trade them just based on a five-year plan. We trade them based on a hundred thousand miles. So we usually end up ordering fewer cars than we actually have listed in our plan.
So Bill, if we're color-conscious, when are we going to see a total turnover of all black cars and no more black and whites?
That's a good question. You know the answer to that? I'll ask my deputy chief who's over the fleet. Okay? Maybe in five years.
The living chart, it looked four to five years to get to five eighty-two, but I didn't know.
That's, again, that's, that's not all black, that's not all of our current field cars. That's some, you know, detective vehicles and things like that. So, but we don't, we don't order police packages on detective vehicles. There's no need for that type of equipment. But he's right, it's probably, it's probably as close to four or five years that we'll see the turnover. And the reason all the cars are black is we could, we could, we could paint them, but you know, we used to be able to order them black and white, but they don't make them anymore. You either order them white or you order them black. So, you know, it's hard for somebody that's been around thirty-five years. I like that traditional black and white car. But it's just to, to spend twelve or fourteen hundred dollars more to make it black and white is not necessary. And as you can see, we really are happy with the markings. The police is brighter, it's bigger, the emblem's larger, and the city of Oklahoma City stands out more. So, and bottom line is the officers in the field love it. They think it looks cool, it looks good, so.
They look more sinister.
Yeah, make those younger officers happy and they look good in it, then that makes them happy.
If you want it cool, you need to work on your graphics.
Yeah, well, that costs too. Our projected helicopter, our five-year needs on our helicopter. We, we used to keep our helicopter every three years and trade them off before we had to do major overhauls. About every three years, on most helicopters, you have to do a complete overhaul at three years. So we try to really keep helicopters in, get our trade-in value up. But this, this go-around, we've really, these helicopters we have now are almost twelve years old and they're only a year apart in age. And we did that because over a period of time, we projected we could save several million dollars even with the lower trade-in value at that, into that period. So we, you know, we, we basically, we've overhauled those helicopters several times. Our goal is to try to keep them ten years. We've kept them twelve. And we're, we're in the process this year, we actually have the money in the budget to replace both helicopters. Now, we won't place both heli, replace both helicopters in the same year. We'll do one one year and another one the next. But it is in our budget this year. They're going to go out for RFP for both helicopters to hopefully drive the costs down some if we're ordering two helicopters. And we're also looking at a larger helicopter. So for, for several reasons, for us to assist fire, to possibly pour water on fires, which our smaller helicopters won't do now with all the wildfires that we're having. We're just, we're kind of tired of the fire department getting all the glory on these fires, so we want to do that ourselves and help out. Anyway, we, we work with the fire chief and possibly, you know, ordering larger helicopters and so that's what we're looking at. The next slide is a command post. This is our new command post that we're purchasing with federal dollars, our justice assistance grants. We have about five hundred thousand that we are dedicating to, to a new command post. Again, you know, I'm, I'm pretty excited about this because as you, if you can read that up there, it says Oklahoma Police and Fire Mobile Command Post. The, the fire chief and I and, and staff have worked together and decided to create a joint command post. And I don't think there's probably another city in the country that's probably, I've never seen this. And, you know, we work so closely together, we work so well together that this command post, as much money is being spent on it, will get a lot more use if we have the fire department using it as well as ourselves. It's large enough to accommodate both. There's many, there's many incidents where we both respond to it, even, even in wildfires where you have police that are evacuating, that are protecting, blocking off streets. You have two different sections, one for fire, one for police, and then you have a command area for joint operations. I, I, it's real, I'm pretty excited about it. The fire, the fire department does not have to order a command post because of this, but they, they're going to order the, the cab that pulls this. They have the drivers already licensed to do that and we'll train together on it and we'll respond together on it. And just, it's, I'm pretty excited about it. And I think Councilman Mars asked why police was before fire up here. This is just a mock-up, but I, but I told Councilman Mars, with all due respect, this was the police presentation and that's why police is first. So, anyway, that's, that's basically what I have for our five-year improvement plan. If I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
You could reverse that on the other side of the mobile command post to make Mars happy, but.
Great idea. I didn't think of that. We could put fire first. And we talked about what color to paint it, you know, blue and, blue and red make purple so we could do purple.
Yes.
But we'll probably end up with red, white, and blue or something like that. That'd be, that'd be okay too.
Any questions of Chief Citi, commissioners?
Next, next up is Eric Wingon with Public Works.
Thank you, Chairman and members of commission. I'm pleased to present the Public Works Department capital improvement plan for two thousand thirteen, two thousand seventeen. As I introduced, the Public Works Department, we are composed of six divisions with good administration, engineering, street traffic, drainage, maintenance, field services, stormwater quality, and oil gas. We have three hundred and ninety-three employees and our general operating budget's about forty-four point eight million dollars a year. The capital improvement plan that you have before you today, we're going to break that over five years. You'll see that breakdown here. Total is three hundred and eighty-one million. But the things that you'll notice is you'll see that there is actually a decrease in the amounts as we go from two thousand thirteen into thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. If you look at capital projects like the ones that we facilitate, talk about bridges, roads, and drainage, there's a downturn in the economy just a couple of short years ago, and we're seeing the effects of that in the plan. So we were able to start engineering work, but we weren't able to do as much construction. But you'll actually see that number start increasing again in fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen. So we are in recovery and you're going to see us move forward here in the next few short years. We look at the summary of projects by type, the vast majority of what Public Works capital program involves is streets at two hundred and eighty-four million. But you'll see the other projects composed of bridges, traffic, drainage, facilities, equipment, and then also libraries. If we look at those just in a different form, of course, put a pie chart up here for you today, but again, you can see again, seventy-five percent of that is in streets. You'll see the other categories to the right with libraries being the smallest at two When you look at the status, break our projects down into design, construction, and future projects, you'll see we have thirty-three percent of our projects currently in design, twenty-four percent in construction. And then over the next five years, we'll engage another forty-three percent of those projects. When you look at our funding source, the two thousand geo bond program is, is the vast majority of the, the funding. We also still have some two thousand geo bonds. You'll see that in the lower right-hand corner at three percent. So over eighty percent of the project revenues, of the funding sources for most, do come from bond program. You'll see some other program improvement funds, you'll see CIP, you'll see the Public Property Authority. If you recall, the Public Property Authority does advanced engineering work, helps us get ahead of the curve when we're actually doing design. We then take those plans into construction under the bond. You'll see there's stormwater drainage utility. That is a part of the water bill that Oklahoma City residents receive. You'll see street and alley fund. And then, of course, you also see tax increment financing, TIF funds. Those are part of the contributions made towards project one eighty. Some examples of some of the, the work that we do when we talk about streets, a lot of those include street scapes. These are some, some of the completed work. This is Classen Boulevard from Twenty-Fourth to Thirtieth. And this was constructed over three phases. It was completed in oh-nine and finally completed with the last phase in April of two thousand eleven. But a lot of that includes landscaping in the medians, a lot of hardscapes. And I think probably, most of you have probably seen this location. We have other widenings. This would be Penn from a hundred and fiftieth to a hundred and sixty-fourth. And again, as we continue to expand in Oklahoma City, there's a lot of widenings that are included in the two thousand seven bond issue. As traffic volumes increase, as we exceed that seven, eight, nine thousand traffic volume per day, it's necessary for us to widen from two lane to four lane. And so this is a number of those projects that are underway now. This is Morgan Road from Fifteenth to Twenty-Ninth, another one of the widenings that is underway. This is Markwell Paving. This is about a two and a half million dollar project. This is Northeast Sixteenth. So again, there's, there's a number of these projects. This is actually a resurfacing. This is PR six. This is a two thousand ten, two thousand eleven project, Rudy Construction, about one point six million. Obviously, probably the more noticeable ones are the ones that are underway here downtown. This would be project one eighty. You're looking at the completed Sixth Street at Harvey. We also have Reno at Robinson. There's quite a bit of work that's outside of City Hall today. There have been a total of five packages bid to date. Pretty much everything that you see that's either barricaded or lane restricted now in downtown will be completed at the end of the year. We are proposing two additional packages in project one eighty, so there's going to be a council presentation in the next month or so as we propose those future packages. There was a lot of rush to get a lot of project one eighty done, obviously with the Devon Development. We have a new opportunity to, to control the construction a little bit as we move forward into the future. So I think that you'll see a few changes where we want to enhance pedestrian flexibility in the downtown area, making sure that we maintain access more readily to businesses and to the patrons of downtown. So I think you'll see a few changes as we go out in the future. Other parts of project one eighty, of course, were the Mary Botanical Garden renovations. This obviously is the band shell on the upper right. You see the, the re-glazed Crystal Bridge on the left and some of the water features in the low right. Other components of Public Works also include bridges. This is Historic Route Sixty-Six Bridge. This is aerial view of, of that. This project was similar in construction. This was completed in November of two thousand eleven. Another more notable bridge is the Skydance Bridge over the new I-40. Of course, this was on the front page of the newspaper this morning, obviously getting a lot of attention. We have the opportunity to change the lighting schemes on the bridge and so we're able to phase that with other lighting plans of the downtown area. So there's a lot of unique opportunities in Oklahoma City, especially with the iconic bridge that we now have access to. We also do traffic improvements. This is the intersection at Lee and Main Street. You'll notice a lot of these new traffic signals, especially in the downtown area. And as we continue to work over seven hundred intersections in Oklahoma City, we're integrating modern controllers. It's called intelligent traffic systems. We're able to create corridors in Oklahoma City. Right now, we're working on eighteen of those where we can phase the signals together that allows a more smooth ride. It cuts down on stopping and starting. It's a project that's about half complete now and we're working forward on that. It's a two thousand seven bond issue project. So when it is finished, it'll actually have more or less affected every intersection in Oklahoma City. We have drainage projects. This is channelization at Twenty-Fifth and Penile. This is a channel that was formerly a natural channel causing a lot of flooding in the area. And so these are some drainage improvements that help mitigate that flooding. This is Chisholm Creek at Penn and a hundred and fifteenth. Same thing, again, we're mitigating flooding as, as needed in Oklahoma City. Lightning Creek at Southwest Forty-Fourth in Santa Fe. And then other facilities projects, we're just wrapping up the renovations and the new construction at the Chesapeake Energy Arena. This is the work that you're going to see on the southwest corner. We've recently started reworking Robinson Avenue to make that two-way, four-lane again. We've got a lot of upcoming events. There's a series of planned events in the Chesapeake, not to mention the start of the new Thunder basketball season. So all these are being made ready just for the next couple of weeks, and so you can take advantage of that very soon. Some of the interior shots of one of the new restaurants there. The last of the presentation that we'll show you is a couple of the new libraries that were recently opened. This is the new Northwest Library that opened this summer. It's on a hundred and twenty-second street. We also had a new library open just this past May in Southwest Oklahoma City. This is the Southwest Library at Penn and a hundred and thirty-fourth. And here you'll see some of the artwork that was placed as a part of that project. That'll conclude our presentation. And as we move forward, I think things that you can expect is just from the bond issue alone, we're looking to implement about seventy million dollars a year on average. We're hoping that that number will increase as we go forward as, as tax values continue to climb, as we're able to get more bonding capacity to make sales moving forward. But obviously, a very aggressive plan and a lot of work in the next five years. If there are any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, questions? Thank you, Eric.
Next up, we have the Parks Department. And it looks like Larry Ogles is going to talk to us about the CIP.
I am. Good afternoon, commissioners. Glad to be here. I'm Larry Ogles, Assistant Director of, of Parks. I'm subbing for Wendell this afternoon. But we're pleased to also present the, the five-year capital improvement plan for the Parks Department. As you can see here, this is a layout of, of the proposed expenditure by fiscal year for the next five years. Total of eighty-seven point one million dollars approximately to be spent. Summary of projects by type, we classified our numerous projects that we have into three basic types. One is general park improvements, which are generally deal with improvements that are in outdoor areas of parks. Secondly is facility improvements, which are largely buildings and structures in parks. And then lastly, paving, walks and paths and trails. And you can see the, the relative numbers, dollar numbers associated with each type of project. And I'll go through those a little bit more detail in just a second. This is a breakdown pie chart of, of the breakdown of those different types of projects as a total of the thing, with facility improvements equalling about fifty-four percent, park improvements thirty-seven percent, and the paving, walks and paths, trails, nine percent. Projects by funding source, we like Public Works. Our, we're largely, our capital plan is largely funded through the geo bond issues. We have a very small amount of two thousand geo bond project money left to spend. Most of those are actually in process now and will finish out spending during this fiscal year. But the lion's share of our bond projects are funded now through the two thousand seven bond issue. We do have a section of revenue bonds shown in here, which is largely related to the golf system and the, the Lincoln Golf Course Clubhouse renovation that's, that's in the, in the works right now. system and the Lincoln Golf Course Clubhouse renovation that's in the works right now. Special purpose funds or a variety of different smaller funds that we have that we get through donations, trusts, oil and gas revenues, things like that that are specified for parks, a small amount of MAPS operation money, which is largely tied to the Civic Center renovation that was done a number of years ago. And then we do have a large portion of what we have shown in our CIP as unfunded, and I'll go through that in just a little bit too, to give you some idea of what's in there. Again, of the unfunded portions, some of these are projects that are considered important but don't currently have funding available, and you can see that the lion's share of that is tied to the Free D Theater renovation at the Civic Center Music Hall at around fifteen million dollars. This was a project that was desired to have been included in the MAPS renovation of Civic Center, but it just wasn't able to be fit in. It's still in desperate need of being done, and so this is identified, there may be a capital raising campaign or some other unknown source right now that would fund this, but that's included as an unfunded. There's also a project that is desired but currently unfunded for another family aquatic center in northeast Oklahoma City. We've, not knowing a particular site or anything in mind, this would be something anticipated to perhaps purchase land, extend utilities, things like that, for a site that would be similar to the, in scope at least, to the family aquatic center down at Early Wine Park, which is, was built several years ago and is an extremely popular site that we have. And then we have a number of other smaller projects that total about five million in there. Some examples of park improvements, this is a picture of an improvement that we just recently completed out in Will Rogers Park, we have the Gardens and Arboretum, this was funded by a combination of some grant money, grant monies that came to us from the Community Foundation, some bond monies as well, and it built a new entry to the Arboretum and the Gardens area. Another example of a park improvement, which you can look out the front windows of City Hall and see is coming to a conclusion, is the partially bond-funded and TIF-funded bicentennial park project. Kerr Park is another one, if you're familiar with it, across from the now Sandridge Building, the old Kerr McGee Building. This park is scheduled to be redone in about another year, probably will begin before the end of the, this next fiscal year. And it will redo that park as well, and it includes some bond monies as well as anticipated contributions from Sandridge Energy, which will actually, is anticipated to pick up the lion's share of this. Other park improvements, Memorial Park is one of our older, more historic parks, it's in the area of Northwest Thirty-Six between Klassen and Western, kind of representative of one of our historic parks, has a number of features in it, including the fountain that you see here. This park will receive a complete makeover, and it's currently in design and should be bid by spring. Some examples of facility improvements, this is one that's currently underway and approaching completion, should be complete by the end of the calendar year, and that's the old Ed Lichen Conservatory out at Will Rogers Park. This is actually a conservatory that the city first acquired and set up along the river in Wheeler Park back in the 1915 era. It moved later to the original state fairgrounds at Douglas Park, and it's been in Will Rogers, it moved there in 1936 when Will Rogers Park was built. So it's a very old structure, it had some fairly significant needs and has required really a complete remake to come up with a new historically authentic or replication structure really, because what we've done is we've likewise incorporated some more energy efficiency into the facility as we've rebuilt it, but a real interesting project. Another of the facility type improvements is, and I talked about the family aquatic center earlier, was the Early Wine Family Aquatic Center. This is a new bowl slide that we added and opened up actually about a year ago, and this is kind of typical of some of the newer, more interesting aquatic features. This is just an extremely popular addition to that park that allowed us really to operate at full capacity almost every day during the summer out there. Just a very popular thing, and it's one of those things that from time to time with this type of a facility, the plan is that you need to add something new, exchange something with a new feature from time to time to keep and create some interest in the facilities. And of course, there's new developments in this field all the time as well, so this was one that just has been outstandingly popular and would be something that maybe not this feature exactly, but things like this that we would include in another family aquatic center should we get funding for it. This is another example of a facility improvement, one to our community center at Schillings Park, southeast Twenty-Fifth and Durland Avenue. We put a fairly large addition on this community center, made up largely with some multipurpose rooms. We renovated and remodeled the existing structure to make it a little bit more adaptable for different types of programming, changing programming. It allows us to do a lot more of the fitness-type programming that we've been wanting to switch to and which some of our current centers don't, aren't flexible enough to allow. So this is a big improvement, it's in an area that's just very heavily used and has been, again, very popular since we've opened it. Another facility improvement, I mentioned the Lincoln Golf Course Clubhouse. The clubhouse that you see in the upper left there was built in the sixties, and it, if any of you have been in there at all recently, it is in dire need of some upgrades and a facelift. And in fact, what was decided through it was that it was more cost-effective to tear it down and build a new structure. So we are in process of doing that, as a matter of fact, out to bid right now is some temporary facilities that we will operate out of, they'd be built and will operate out of them all the time that the new clubhouse, which you see a rendering of there in the lower right, will be built. All of this is expected to be completed by the spring of 2014. Some examples of paving, walks and paths, trails, this is a picture of the Deleese Park Trail, Northwest Fiftieth and Meridian. We had an old, really just a dirt trail out there for a number of years that, in order to make it accessible and a little bit more all-weather, we did go ahead and pave it, it's been exceptionally well-used since we've done that. As a matter of fact, there's a nursing home or a retirement home village on the east side of the park that we're just seeing an enormous number of folks coming out and taking advantage of it. Goes around the lake, around the perimeter of the park, so this is an example of one of our paving trails projects. Another one, I'd shown you the picture before of the Arboretum entryway, our Arboretum out at Will Rogers Park has been noted for a number of years as being one of the premier plant museum, if you will, tree museums, certainly in the state, but it's suffered from lack of accessibility through it. There have never been trails or interpretive areas and that really in it, it was more of a scientific place. So we have added a trail out there, that too is being real heavily used, and it really makes the facility a lot more available to the public. And then just another kind of group of things, we've got a number of parking lots and park roads and things like that that are in need of rehabilitation, in some cases some adding to, revamping them to incorporate some ADA accessibility in parking and things like that. So that's another big area of work within the paving projects. And with that, that completes our presentation on the thing, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have on that as well.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you. And last but not least, this Noshas Lorda with Utilities Department.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I hate following the Parks Department.
Nothing pretty to show us?
I do, but I believe that we're principally an invisible infrastructure.
It's manifested in the greenness of the parks.
Thank you. We'll talk about the Water and Waste Water CIP and then move on and talk just briefly about the Solid Waste CIP. Both of those programs are funded with revenues from customers, in the case of the Water and Waste Water CIP, we also use revenue bonds. We look always at, as we review the CIP, and there have been some changes this year, we look at the reliability of service and the quality of service as we review each year's program. The Water CIP begins with where we have water lines to start with, we are in roughly three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five square miles of the corporate limits, you see water lines here, I draw your attention to the three water treatment plants, Draper at the southeast corner of the Draper, of the Lake Draper, the Hefner Plant at the north side of Lake Hefner, and the Lake Upper, the Lake Upper Holster Plant at Fifth and Penn, almost downtown. The water system has several challenges, about reliable pressure and flow to customers, particularly during peak demand, but building a strengthened system, again, for reliability and meeting that growing demand in the system. Significant challenges we've mentioned to the Commission in past years is low water pressure areas during peak demand, shown on this map in the red areas. We have improvements we'll show you that are working toward fixing those problems, we're excited about. We begin with long-range studies and in-house assessments, which are done continuously. And again, particularly the water system, our changes are reflecting experiences that we've had in two of the hottest summers ever in Oklahoma. The water total is 488 million dollars, and it includes improvements to all pieces and parts of infrastructure in various parts of the community. Our infrastructure is pipes, plants, and pumps, day in, day out. We've been building a transmission main from the Draper Lake Plant in southeastern Oklahoma City to the southwest over the past several years, and this program includes additions to that pipeline that you see in red, anything shown in red on the map that's a pipe is going to be complete by 2017. Other improvements are underway, they're shown in black, they're going to be awarded by 2015, or we're constructing improvements, but I'll show you pictures of them in just a second. Most of the Water CIP is improvements for our raw water supply, it includes a pipeline between Lake Draper and Hefner, and the beginning of construction in 2016 and 2017 of a second pipeline to Lake Otoka in southeastern Oklahoma. Neighborhood replacement will be about five million dollars a year, about nine and a half miles of pipe each year. Again, we're building the westward extension from the Draper Water Treatment Plant and other transmission mains, shown again in red and black, at about forty-six million dollars total. We're excited to begin construction of a new booster station at southwest One Hundred and Fourth in Portland on land that we're leasing from the Will Rogers Airport. That booster pump station twenty-five and the water storage tank that goes along with it will help us push more water west and alleviate some, a couple of those red marks that you see in our overall map of low-pressure problems. This is a picture of improvements recently made to the Overholster Water Treatment Plant, we are making improvements in all of the water treatment plants. We had hoped frankly to be able to decommission the Overholster Plant first started in 1918, but found during these extreme peak demands we've had in the last couple of summers that we would need to keep that plant for another five to seven years until we make the connections planned between the Draper and Hefner plants. Some, this is work underway at the Hefner Plant to expand it by thirty-three percent from seventy-five to a hundred million gallons a day. It's a pipeline laying on southwest, on South Portland, it's steel pipe that's being put in the ground as we speak, and a picture of a pipeline out of the Hefner Plant to Britton Road that's recently completed. The raw water supply plant is the most significant project that's underway in the utility. We built a pipeline that next year will be fifty years old, that brings more than half of your water supply into town. We have additional water rights in the southeast that we can't get here because the pipe's too small, so the first thing to do is to, again, continue to work on improvements to reliability of that pipeline and parallel it so we can bring in the forty million, pardon me, forty thousand acre-feet of water rights that we hold in southeastern Oklahoma and can't bring to town. We believe we have to complete that work by about 2021, and are working on ways to manage that work, it's very interesting to me as an engineer, but will be important for all of us for service reliability, future economic development, and more importantly, for managed water and sewer investments so that we don't overburn customers with high water rates. Very complicated, very interesting. Total water supply of the 488 million, 186 million is dedicated to the two raw water supply projects. I mentioned the Hefner and Draper connection, new study coming out about that, it's very interesting, we will share that with the Water Trust next week. The Waste Water CIP is based, of course, on water sheds. We rely on gravity flow, this map shows you the major water sheds around which the wastewater treatment plants are constructed and the major pipelines in those water sheds. Just like the Water CIP, we're looking for system strengthening, reliability, and meeting increased demand. We have master plans for this utility as well. We'll be making two neighborhoods, sewer main and relief mains, lift station and plant improvements. And this CIP has been modified slightly from your previous presentations to match current demands. It's 164 and a half million dollars. Pipes in the wastewater system are shown in this slide with those shown in red being awarded by 2017, and those shown in black awarded earlier than that. We're making improvements at each of the wastewater treatment plants, and those are shown by dots on the map. Waste Water, the Waste Water CIP is mostly treatment plant improvements to meet peak demand, about twenty-five percent is in new sewer capacity to provide service to new customers. We're going to replace about twelve, replace or repair about twelve miles of sewer line a year for a total of about six point two million a year. We're building again additional sewer capacity in each of the major water sheds, over forty million dollars in the program. This shows again a map of the increased sewer capacity. We're making major repairs to our largest wastewater lift station, which carries about forty percent of the sewage collected in the city to the North Canadian Wastewater Treatment Plant and to other lift stations that are costing about thirteen million dollars. The Winter Pump Station, our largest pumping station in wastewater, was flooded a few years ago in the 500-year storm that hit the North Canadian Basin, so it is, it was being rebuilt, is being rebuilt now with a, and is being rebuilt with a flood wall to protect it from that 500-year storm. Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements are quite various, this is a picture of improvements underway at the South Canadian Plant where we've made reliability improvements to make certain that what we've got there works well. This is a picture of what's called a flow equalization basin, when it rains really hard, the sewers take on rainwater, you have to have a place to put that rainwater for a very short period of time. The method that we use, we have it all the other wastewater treatment plants but South Canadian, so this allows us, allows us to hold that peak flow and feed it into the wastewater treatment plant. treatment plant in a logical way so that the plant performs well and isn't overloaded by rainwater. The left side, the left side's a picture of the facility under construction, the right side's a picture of it being tested for operation. It works, we're excited to have it for the reliability that gives us in South Oklahoma City. Total water and sewer combined CIP is $652.5 million. And again, it's heavy loaded, particularly in the last two years as we begin the work on a second Otoka pipeline in earnest. Finally, Environmental Assistance Trust has about a $25 million capital program total. And of course, most of our money at Solid Waste is spent on vehicles, one in $17 million of the $25 million. We spend a little bit on recycling bins, and carts make up pretty much the rest of the program normally at about $5.5 million. You can bet $5.5 million for Big Blues, I think it's hard to picture a number, it's a lot of Big Blues. We're also doing two things of interest. We're building a CNG fueling facility at the Solid Waste Headquarters, which is at 11505 North Portland. We have, we will have in the next year 36 vehicles that are CNG fueled. It's cost-effective for us to use CNG for our very largest trucks, and we're pleased with those facilities because the CNG motor is less noisy. While Solid Waste is a very noisy business, picking up a cart, you're dumping it into the truck, it makes noise. This truck makes less noise in and of itself, so it's less disturbing. We're real pleased about that. We're also doing a flow, what's called a flow and disposal plan, finally. That plan is intended to tell us how much landfill capacity we have and tell us ways that we might plan to make the most of that, in which, in our cases, we lease landfill space, we don't own any landfills. We want to know what our future looks like in Solid Waste so that we can give policymakers an approach to how to deal with that that's acceptable to everyone. So that plan we're really excited about. We expect there to be some policy recommendations come out of it that will be important, I think is probably the right thing and interesting. So, last but not least, more wonderful pictures of infrastructure, and I'm happy to answer questions.
I have one, if we can go back to the graph that shows increased sewer capacity.
Sure.
Can you find that for me? That's it, you just went, there we are. Where is it depicted that we actually have sewer lines now, sewer capacity now? Is that graphed in here in color somehow? How can I tell where we have sewer and where we don't?
Let me just show you the picture. This shows you the larger pipes. It doesn't, we aren't really showing you where we have capacity limitations. Generally, what we're building is a pipe that parallels an existing pipe. We've got growth going on, we've got sewer, recurring sewer overflows, and so we're trying to make certain we have capacity to carry the sewage that's generated in the area or that will be generated in the near future.
So we're basically dealing with capacity where we have sewers now, but we're not expanding sewers beyond where they are, or how do we decide that?
The Water Utilities Trust, our service extension policy begins with cost participation for oversizing sewer lines into new areas. We call those Policy A for water and Policy B for sewer. So these are largely dealing with existing basins where we've got service, but service is expanding, and we need to, we need to parallel a trunk main. Our graphics are probably not the best for that, but if you, do you have a pointer? No. Sorry. Let's see.
I'm trying to figure out how it tracks with what the development patterns are or what the master plan for the city wants them to be going forward. How do we, how do we make these things fit together?
We do pay close attention to the master plans for the city as they're developed and also look at our new connection trends. What builds, what builds the wastewater CIP is a computerized model that shows us flows and the capacity of pipes. The primary focus in these next few years is making certain that we're stopping sewer overflows. We have places, particularly, for example, let's talk about the basin at the bottom of the slide where you see the WWTP, the wastewater treatment plant, that's South Canadian. We have recurring overflows along Western Avenue. So we're building a pipe that comes back from the South Canadian Plant to the north, that's in construction now, and then we're building an additional line where we found that we had some short-range needs for service as well. So we look at current flows, existing customers, and forecasted growth based on, based on a fairly averaged growth. If the growth rate in that area has been 2%, we would probably continue the growth rate at 2%. And also look at what the ultimate size of the pipe might need to be for the whole watershed. So it's a multiple pieces and parts, and we build a computer model that helps us do that. What we have here is what we know we need by 2031. So we're building, based on, in our case, a long-range plan that goes to 2031 for the wastewater system, and then we build the things that we know are the shortest in capacity first. This, again, using the South Canadian model, we know we had chronic overflows in that area, it was one of the first things we needed to fix. So that's how we, how we pick and choose, if you will.
Thank you.
We aren't, from our side, actively extending sewer lines independently to target growth in an area.
You say you are?
We are not.
Not.
We're responding to development requests for facilities.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment in relation to your question. In the past, we have been provided some maps show existing water and sewer lines. In this budget presentation here, obviously what Marcia's showing us are the major lines. There are other maps that have been generated for us before that I'm sure could be done for us, again, to answer your question.
Yeah, Commissioner, we'd be happy to, happy to bring you whatever tools would be helpful to you. The system is fully loaded in the city's geographic information system, so we can generate anything that would be helpful, happy to.
Okay, thank you.
And with that, that's all the presentations that we have for you, and we would just ask that you approve the resolution.
Commissioners, we need a, a motion which is a resolution approving the proposed capital improvement plan for 2013 through 2017.
I so move with a comment that these four presentations that we've just seen, they're just beyond my comprehension how they do their work with the complexity of water, acquisition of water, the police, the public works, the parks. We really do have some significantly talented people in charge of those departments, and I applaud them. And with that, I move that that be approved.
Second. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion to approve the resolution forwarding the CIP plan to council. Cast your votes. And that's approved. And we're to the end of items for individual consideration. Everything else is continued. Planning Commission committees, anyone? Planning Commission members?
Yes.
Mr. Bright, you're going to bring something up, weren't you?
I do have, I have three things. I didn't understand on that industrial park application where it's on the appearance corridor, I didn't understand why we can't apply the landscaping provisions that we have in the subdivision regulations along appearance corridors, because if you recall, if there's a preliminary plat that was approved before we adopted sidewalks, et cetera, et cetera, all of those applicants have to comply with those new provisions.
Well, we asked them to. They don't have to. We persuade them.
Well, I thought would they, I thought they had to.
No.
You sure?
Well, we requested in the staff report and requested in a TE, but as Paul Odom III did one day, he can decline.
As this fellow did.
He is the only one who has declined, declined to my knowledge, Paul Odom III.
Okay, so there's, so there's no teeth in what we've done on, on zoned areas that were zoned before we adopted those restrictions?
I think that's correct with respect.
That is correct.
That is correct. Now, one thing though, they are subject to the landscape requirement.
That's correct.
The current landscape requirements. So that probably was zoned some time back, I gathered from Warren, but for their certificate of occupancy and their building permits, they had to comply with the newly upgraded in the last two, three years. Landscaping requirements. So it's not that they can go back and not plant any trees or any screening, they have to comply with the landscaping requirements, but they may not have to reply, comply, as Dan I think was indicating, with the appearance corridor requirements that post-dated that zone.
But just the general landscaping requirements.
If I made that, that's right. I think that's right.
They would do that, right?
That's right.
The landscape requirements, it depends on how the appearance corridor, landscape requirements are set up. I'm not sure exactly when those were adopted, but if they're like the landscape ordinance, they'll have to comply with those too.
Right. Now, I don't know if the appearance corridor, that's a good point, if appearance corridor landscape requirements are part of the general landscape ordinance.
Right.
That, that's the question, I don't know the answer, but at minimum, they have to comply with the landscape ordinance.
Sarah may help us here.
So there you have it.
Well, I'll try. Okay, so the appearance corridors are, they're guidelines that we apply and to rezonings. The landscape code is what they'll be held accountable to for the plats. But the good news is that the landscape code was really beefed up around the same time as the appearance corridor guidelines. So when they go for their, when they go to building, to, yeah, for, to building permit, then at least the code they're applying does have some kind of beefed-up standards if you're comparing it to appearance corridor guidelines.
And you catch that at the permit stage.
At the permit stage, right. It's kind of the same thing where we, you know, if you, actually, any plat that you have come in here, it's, if they have the zoning already, there's not a lot sometimes that we can say, say about it. So this is that, so for the, the fact that it's on an appearance corridor didn't, didn't really kick in anything additional.
No.
But the landscape codes does talk about industrial uses along appearance corridors, and there'll be specific guidelines, and I wish I could quote them, but I think it's probably a tree for every 40 feet or something.
Well, I guess, I guess the question would be, is there any reason to, or should there be a reason to maybe look at the landscape code again to make, and beef it up with respect to appearance corridors? Would that be effective on like this application that we saw today? Would that, would that make him do more if the ordinance was revised and upgraded?
Well, for it to be a requirement you needed in the code, yes, but I think that because we just, we just, well, two things. We, back in '07, I think, is when the landscape code was updated. But then, remember a while back when Susan Miller was here and she was talking about how we did the appearance standards thing where we thought everybody should have upgraded standards and then manage your own appearance corridor? There were some landscaping upgrades that were made as a part of that process that were incorporated into the code, and I'm gonna, I don't know, Russell could see if I agree, if this is correct, but I think at this point, with us so close to getting our new plan adopted, it might be a better use of staff's time to be able to kind of let that appearance standards part go for now, and then with Plan OKC, there'll probably be some code changes that would result from that. Is that proper, Russell, to say that?
Yes, Sarah.
Okay. I don't want to speak out of turn.
Way to weigh in there, Russell. Service allocation matters.
All right, well, no, I have, never, thank you.
I'm encouraging this innovative entrepreneurial approach.
And this is adding a, maybe a little burden to the staff, but I've been curious for a long, long time when we have the map of the zoning around what the applicant's area is, and we see AAR1, R4, and then here's PUD 600. I would like to see on the map what the base zoning is of PUD 600 on each one of those because I haven't a clue what that might be zoned for, and I think that'd be helpful when we look at these areas to see just, now, is that a big?
We get, we do get that sometimes.
Usually you know that, it's in your report if you look at it.
This says like PUD XYZ.
Where it says northeast, southwest on the page. You know, like if you look at the existing zoning and land use section, sometimes I fail to refer to that, but then I go back to it, you'll see.
Yeah, sometimes it does.
It may not go as far as you would like potentially.
I'd just like to see it on the map, like PUD XYZ, R1, or whatever it is, just so that's the base zoning. Is that really a big?
Now, internally, we are, we do have a layer in our mapping system that we could put that on for you. I do want to point out, though, that if you're the public and you were to go online and you look especially at, say, Ward 8, and you see all this PUD zoning, you don't have any idea what that is unless you, unless you go into the individual files.
And go way down there.
And you find the uses, you know, that are, I just want to put that out there as we continue to.
Sounds like a new project to me, Sarah.
Well, not, I really didn't mean to add, but it'd be helpful.
We could do, yes, we could do it for you. It's not incorporated into the, to what the public would view at this point, but internally we would be able to do that.
A lot of times it shows up on the first page when we say north, south, east, west.
That's what I said, yeah.
You know, if it's like, if it's right there.
Sometimes, sometimes it doesn't give that detail, not always, in other words.
Well, but many times in there, it'll say it's a basic R1 PUD, it'll have some R4 in it. Track one could be R4, it could be R2, it could be R1, it could be C3. And, you know, a while back, you guys were putting together a map trying to figure out what all those things were in the PUDs. I had asked for what R4 there was in the northwest quadrant of Ward 8, and we got part of it, but we never really got it finished, and I know you're still working on that, but...
Well, yours, yours, your word is really tricky too because you'll have a lot of, let's say you're, what our map will show you is it'll say a PUD with R4 base zoning. But you don't know how many apartments that means, and in some cases, it might not mean apartments at all. It might be R4 zoning, zoned for a senior center limited to 56 units, you know? So I don't honestly think that we'd very quickly be able to change our system enough to get that information available, available to you on a case-by-case basis, because it could, it'll show you, you know, PUD 1256 or something, and then just C3 base. Well, that might be limited to one use, or that might be, that might be 10 years old and have, you know, almost all uses, so.
Then, then should I say never mind?
That would, that would, that would be okay.
All right, well, that, do, do whatever you can.
But we can at least give you the PUD with the base zoning, and then you'll still see, you're seeing the land use too.
Right.
Because sometimes the land use doesn't match exactly like we saw today.
All right, good, thanks. Now, my third question, and that's the application of the fellow general store. When the notice is 300-feet radius, that's a football field away in a, in goat pasture. Nobody, that's why nobody showed up. Nobody knew about it. There's no notice, so.
There, there, you have to notify at least 15 people by statute, is that not right?
That's by ordinance.
You keep, ordinance, but you keep reaching out until you get at least 15 people, no matter how far you go.
Yeah.
So you have to have at least 15 people notified.
Those don't count.
No.
Well, but I, I mean, that, you know.
Unless it's your application.
But it, this, so 15 property owners?
Yeah.
Or, you know.
Yes.
15 owners of property.
Yeah.
And is it confirmed that that was done? How do we know it was done?
I, I can't, I'm assuming it was done, I mean.
The applicant has to submit an ownership list that certain.
It comes from the county, though, right.
On an abstract, or they can get it from the county assessor's office. We then send notices to those people.
From the applicant's list?
Yes.
Got it.
Dan, in that being changed, our request for it to be changed to...
Dan, and that being changed, or request for it to be changed to increase it to 1,000 feet?
I think so. I think there's an ordinance.
1,000 feet or so many people? I know at our little meeting out at Choctaw Road and 40, the, I mean, I almost got tired and feathered because that was only 300 feet. You know, there's nothing I can do about it, it's, you know, it's state law, I guess.
It's by ordinance. And what we did was, it used to be five, 15 owners or 1,000 feet. Now it's 15 owners. You just keep going out until they get 15.
Yeah. That's it. Anything else, Commissioners?
I have one thing. I had asked the staff to print out copies of the Oklahoma Health Center's master plan.
Yeah.
Due to some controversy, so you have some, so if you pass them around, so everyone to have it. Staff also emailed you a copy, but it's a little easier to look at it on a printout basis. That's concerning, a case that is before us has been continued with the residents with the zoning overlay in that area.
And this item will be heard on November 8th?
November 8th. Thank you.
Okay.
So in terms of the planning department, we, I mean, the chairman had asked for a study session for discussion of the health center master plan. We are proposing to do that on the 25th. We also have an urban development committee item there which is proposed changes to the downtown ordinance as well. So that's, I don't know, do we have confirmation from potential attendees? I believe Kathy O'Connor was not available on the 25th, so I'm not, I haven't been making the contacts, so I don't know what the, where we are on that.
You're talking about the downtown plan for Kathy?
No, that was.
Or the health center?
The health center.
Okay.
So we're going to have the health, we're going to discuss this on the 25th?
Yes, that's the plan.
I understand, ahead of the application which will be heard.
Two weeks after that.
A.
On the A.
November 8th.
Maybe I can be out of town.
We're not discussing the application, we're discussing the plan.
The plan and.
On the 25th.
The plan and the PUD application that's coming to us and how they intersect or don't.
Right. Okay.
Development Services, anybody? They left. Municipal Council? No citizens to be heard? Any other business? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. That was unanimous.